Meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for June 8th, 2020. If you, we will see an American flag on our screen in just a moment, and if you would stand and join me for the pledge allegiance to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll of the members? Janice Hoppy.
Present.
Judy Hutchinson.
Present.
Zach Urban.
Present.
Rachel Haltine.
Present.
Amanda Weaver.
Here.
Corey Stites.
Present.
Leah Dozeman.
Here.
Valerie Nosler Beck.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, all members of council are present. We have a court. Thank you very much. I'm very pleased to have a proclamation to read this morning for Wheat Ridge Safety Month in June of 2020. Whereas in conjunction with the National Safety Council and thousands of organizations across the country. Sorry.
I'm sorry, that was an audio reminding us it's being recorded. My apologies.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. Whereas, okay, whereas National Safety Month focuses on reducing leading causes of injury and death at work on the roads and in our homes and communities, and to draw attention to safe practices that will decrease the likelihood of accidents. And whereas all community members deserve to live in communities that promote safe and healthy living environments. And whereas safe communities require the cooperation of all levels of government, business and industry employees as well as the general public. And whereas through the support and observance of National Safety Month each year, employees are helping to reverse and increase in accidental injuries and death in the workplace. And whereas the city supports safety efforts and has taken a proactive stance in providing a safe and healthy work environment for its employees by supporting the Be Safe Safety Committee. And whereas the city works to prevent accidental injury by educating employees about safe and healthy practices in the workplace through training and encouragement, and whereas the beginning of the summer season, traditionally a time of increased accidents and injuries, is an appropriate time to focus attention on risk management and prevention. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Wheat Ridge formally designate June as Wheat Ridge Safety Month and urge all community members to establish and maintain safe practices in their homes, workplaces and communities. In witness whereof, I have set my hand and seal this eighth day of June, 2020. Bud Starke. And we have with us Allison Scheck, and Allison, I believe chairs our Be Safe Committee, and I'd like to, to recognize her and ask her to say a few things.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Allison Scheck, Administrative Services Director here at the city of Wheat Ridge, and thank you so much for, for reading that proclamation, Mayor. June is National Safety Month, and the city does have, for the benefit of our new counselors, I wanted to let you know the city does have a very active safety committee, the Be Safe Safety Committee. And it's actually chaired by Amber Garrett, who, she is the new executive assistant, who started on February 10th, the same days her chief, and only got a few precious weeks in the office, although she's been here quite a bit, but before, you know, everything happened. But Amber has just really jumped in with both feet, is very passionate about safety and has just brought a whole new level of energy to this awesome, awesome committee. So we do have an employee committee. It's made up of different staff throughout the city, different departments, different levels, but they're all very committed to, to safety here in Wheat Ridge. So one of the things that they, they have done this year to honor, in honor of National Safety Month is they're incentivizing employees to take virtual trainings, safety trainings. And we're focusing on things like advanced defensive driving, bloodborne pathogens, preventing fishing, which I think you've all heard is on the rise at the moment through this, through this crisis, and working outdoors in, in warm weather and some other things too. So that's been a focus. Another thing I wanted to just mention is that the city does receive insurance premium credits for the proactive work that we do here in the city, and we really make that a priority. And so as an example, this year we received over $5,000 in, in credits towards our SERSA premium. And well, we, and that was based on an audit that we completed last year. Well, we just had last year's audit, this year we had last year's audit, and we, it went so well. And we got a near perfect score. We actually exceeded, really, you know, it's out of 100, and we got 130 because we earned so many bonus points due to the proactive work of this safety committee. So we take this very seriously and just wanted to let you know a little about that, and thank you, Mayor, so much again for the proclamation.
Thank you so much, and thank you for the good work that you do. You know, safety is, is really important, you know, being able to go to work and go home every day safely is, is something that we don't take for granted. So thank you very much for all of that work.
Thank you.
Let's see, we, in your study session, in your packets, counselors, you have study session notes for April the 6th, April the 20th, May the 4th, and May the 18th of 2020, and council minutes of May 13 and May 11, 2020. Hopefully you've had a chance to review those, and I would ask if there is no changes to those that we had let them stand approved? Are there any, any objections to that? Any, any changes to be noted? Okay, we will let the minutes stand approved as presented. We're, let's see, we're now at the approval of the agenda without, without exception. Are there any, any exceptions to the agenda? All right, we will go through the agenda as presented. We are now at our citizens' right to speak. We're coming to you tonight in a virtual format. All of the, all of the public has been muted, but now it's your, your right to speak. Citizens may speak on any matter not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes, under citizens' right to speak. When I, citizens who wish to speak on a public hearing, on a, at, at a public hearing or a decision resolution or another motion or agenda item, we will take public comment on those at the time. So this is something that is not on the agenda. The public's microphones have been unmuted now, and if you are not speaking, please mute your own telephone. I will invite members of the public to speak based upon the first letter of your last name. So when I come to your position in the alphabet, please ask to speak, and I'll be happy to recognize you. And when I do recognize you, please clearly state your first name and last name, and if you would please spell your last name and give your address for the record. Also, we're in a Zoom format, and down at the bottom is a, a, a hand that you can raise, and it will raise your hand in Zoom, and I will try to be good about checking that also. And Allison, if I do miss that, if you would prompt me at the appropriate time. Okay, so we are ready to start. Is there anyone wishing to speak whose last name begins with the letter A through E?
Yes.
Okay, if you would please tell us, introduce yourself, first name and last name, give us your address, and you'll have three minutes. Please go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Kate Cook. I'm with Local Works here in Wheat Ridge. As you know, we are a partner with the city to promote and support businesses in our community here in Wheat Ridge. So I just wanted to give you a quick update this evening. Thank you for the clock. I started mine too. Just wanted to let you know how we are changing and refocusing our efforts in light of COVID-19. We are rolling out a new business community engagement program called Chalk of the Town. It should be a lot of fun. We are inviting the community to come in small groups to meet at our local businesses where they can design chalk art, and we have three different dates here throughout the summer, so the week of June 14th, July 12th, and August 9th, and we will be producing a map to encourage people to go to the businesses, not only do the art, but then also visit those businesses and all the ones along the corridor. We'll be hosting a fitness in the virtual park on June 13th with our very own Feed Your Soul Fitness, and that will be at nine o'clock that morning. We're going to be having a driving biking appreciation parade for Lutheran medical staff. That'll be on June 24th, that's Wednesday, at 6:30 PM. The parade will stay on the Lutheran campus, and people are encouraged to decorate their car signs and their bike, and obviously practice social distancing. So in addition to our sort of in-person, moderate in-person events, we have some pretty fun virtual events going on right now. We've been doing a Home on the Ridge social media campaign. This week's topic is local brews, so we're encouraging people to connect with our local breweries here, share their information, and then we also do business spotlights as, as a part of this campaign. We have a community coffee break on Wednesday mornings. It's a fun way to meet your neighbors and talk about different things that are going on this week's. Question of the day is what new do-it-yourself projects have you taken on, and have they been successful, or have they been challenging? So we've got some stuff coming up in, throughout the summer, we're doing a community-wide bingo. Again, that, it's that mix of virtual and in-person, and really encouraging the residents to connect with our businesses, our parks and the community. So we're doing bingo in July, scavenger hunt in August, and we are working on a Ridge Fest Deconstructed. So if you guys are sort of following the, that new restaurant trend where they deconstruct different foods, so mac and cheese is a big one at my house. I'll hurry. We're looking to deconstruct Ridge Fest and host that throughout the community. So I look forward to talking with you more. If you have questions, please reach out to us.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. It sounds like you got a great, great summer plan, and thanks for all of those activities. Anyone wishing to speak whose last name begins with the letter A through E, please speak, and I will recognize you. Anyone whose last name begins with the letter F through J? F through J? Anyone wishing to speak whose last name begins with K through O? K through O, to speak, and I will recognize you. Anyone whose last name begins with P through T? P through T? Okay, last, last part of the alphabet, names beginning with U through Z. All right, I haven't heard anyone else, so any members of the public wishing to speak on citizens' right to speak? Is there anyone, one more time? Okay, then we will close our citizens' right to speak portion, and we will move to our regular agenda items, and our first item on the agenda is item number one. That's the consent agenda. Ms. Hoppy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please present the consent agenda, item 1A, Resolution Number 31-2020, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2020 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $1,231,571 for the purpose of accepting the CARES Act's local government distribution from Jefferson County. Consent agenda, item 1B, motion to approve payment to the Bank of Oklahoma for 2020 principal and interest payments in the amount of $3,499,700 for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado Sales and Use Tax Revenue Bonds Series 2017A.
Thank you. A motion is, is in order on consent agenda items number 1A and 1B.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve consent agenda items 1A and 1B.
We have a, a motion and a second by Mr. Urban. Would the clerk please poll the council? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Mr. Mayor, the motion is passed unanimously. Thank you very much. We will now go to agenda item number two. Mr. Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 10-2020, an ordinance approving an amendment to the existing planned mixed-use development, PMUD, zoning to increase the allowable height for hospital uses at Clear Creek Crossing, case number WZ-19-10. At issue, the applicant is requesting to modify the underlying zoning to increase the allowable height for hospital use. A hospital is already permitted use at the existing zoning, and the existing zoning also contemplated six-story employment use. However, a hospital built to six stories requires an additional 12 feet of height to meet design requirements and current building codes. The applicant is also seeking a limited edition height allowance accommodating a rooftop elevator associated with a helipad.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. It's an ordinance on second reading, and it is quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing and go to Mr. Goff. We have a staff report and an update on this issue, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did receive a legal protest on this public hearing, and it was validated today by staff, so I'm gonna turn it over to City Attorney Jerry Dahl, and he's gonna explain what the process is for that.
Thank you. Audio's on, is it? Good? Okay.
Yes.
As the manager indicated, we did receive a protest, actually a series of protests, and as council was familiar, under the charter and the ordinance that council adopted in September of last year, those protests are analyzed in terms of, of area and, and location and ownership. And the community development staff did analyze those various protests, all of which emanate from an area on the south side of the Clear Creek Crossing development. As council may know, the, the hospital use, which is the subject of this particular application, is only a sub-area of the Clear Creek Crossing development, but in order to amend that sub-area to permit what is being requested, that's an amendment to the, the entire outline development plan, and so that's, that's a rezoning amendment that affects that whole parcel. And so for that reason, the southerly boundary of this parcel was adjacent to the Applewood neighborhood, and the protests have come in from that neighborhood. Council may ask whether it's appropriate under the charter for protests to be filed by non-residents, and the answer to that is yes. The charter does not restrict the protest right to residents of the city, and this is consistent with how zoning kinds of protests and what challenges are handled by the courts. I would distinguish that, of course, from initiative and referendum, which is restricted exclusively to the registered electors of the city. And, and I think that distinction is important, if you were, if you were wondering about that. In any event, pursuant to the ordinance council adopted last September, the effect of a protest once validated by community development, which they have done, is to automatically continue the public hearing until the next regular business meeting of the council, so that's July the 22nd. That means no testimony tonight. It also means that the staff will renotice the hearing for the, for the 22nd, so this hearing will, I've gotten a lot of notice. But in any event, that's an automatic outcome of the ordinance council adopted implementing the charter protest procedure. So in short form, no testimony tonight, hearing automatically continued, but for the record, it would be appropriate for, and I would advise the mayor, it would be appropriate for him, and he should declare the hearing to be automatically continued to June 22nd, 2020 at 7:00 PM as a virtual hearing. I'm happy to answer any questions. Are there any questions of Mr. Dahl? Ms. Haltine?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, how will the copies of the protests be available to council on public for review?
They're all, of course, public documents. Under the Open Records Act, there's no privileges associated with them, and I'll certainly ask the staff to provide those to you, and, and they'll be available for any public inspection or popping, but it's appropriate for the council to see them, and we can arrange for those to be sent to you in PDF.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, saying none, I'm going to declare the public hearing on this matter continued until June 22nd, 2020, at 7:00 PM in the evening, to be held as a virtual meeting. So, and we will
Have a question.
Conduct this on a, on another time. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is, is the public hearing opened and then continued, or is it continued without being opened?
The public hearing has been opened, so it is being continued. Okay, we will now go to
Mr. Mayor, I apologize for the interruption. Does that need to happen as a motion and a, and a vote to do that?
No. Mr. Dahl? No, not necessary. Council's ordinance from September is pretty clear about that. Says if a protest is submitted after first reading, the hearing shall automatically be continued, and that means no action by council necessary. I did feel it was important for our minutes and the record for the mayor to recognize that and make that declaration, but that's as much as needs to be done. Thank you. Okay, we will move to item number three. Ms. Dozeman, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 33-2020, a resolution of the Wheat Ridge City Council declaring that the city of Wheat Ridge is essential and urging Congress to allocate fair federal emergency support to reopen and rebuild local American economies. At issue on May 5th, 2020, the National League of Cities launched the Cities Are Essential campaign to secure economic relief for the communities on the front line of America's response to the novel coronavirus, COVID-19. The campaign calls for 500 billion in direct federal aid and economic relief from the COVID-19 pandemic over the next two years to support communities who support America's people. This resolution urges Congress to allocate fair and direct federal support to all of America's communities regardless of population size.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff report on this?
Real briefly, Councilmember Hoppy actually asked to have this on, so I'll turn it over to her if she has anything to say, but also, yeah, I think as you all know, there's been several stimulus packages, relief packages approved by Congress, but none of those has provided funding to municipalities of our size, at least direct funding. We were fortunate enough to get some funding through Jefferson County. However, that, those, that funding is fairly restricted on what it can be used for. And the Cities Are Essential campaign is asking for Congress to consider funding municipalities at all sizes to help also backfill lost revenue. So that's kind of what, what this is and what the difference is between what we've already received from Congress.
Thank you. Ms. Hoppy?
I, I believe that we all received the, the emails from NLC talking about the push that they've been making to have municipalities of our size be recognized at a federal level, and we, I think it's important for us to say, yes, our community is important. And while it was nice of Jefferson County to share funding with us, I think that it's important for us to keep pushing for all cities, towns and villages that, that are being affected by this.
Thank you. Before we go to questions of council, I'd like to open it up to the public to speak on agenda item number three. If there's anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item now, if you would speak up, I will be happy to recognize you, and you would be able to speak on this. Okay, I don't hear anyone from the public speaking up to speak on this item, so we'll go to questions from council on this, on this item. Okay, saying none, Ms. Dozeman, a motion is in order.
I move to approve Resolution Number 33-2020, a resolution of the Wheat Ridge City Council declaring that the city of Wheat Ridge is essential and urging Congress to allocate fair federal emergency support to reopen and rebuild local American economies.
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Ms. Hoppy. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the, all those in favor, please signify by saying, by raising your hand, and will, will the clerk please count the votes? Mr. Mayor, the motion is passed unanimously. Thank you so much, and thank you, council, for supporting our city to ask for these funds. We, they're needed. We will go to agenda item number four. Ms. Weaver, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Resolution Number 34-2020, a resolution amending the 2020 open space budget to reflect the approval of the supplemental budget, budget appropriation in the amount of $120,000 to accept a grant from Great Outdoors Colorado in the amount of $110,000 in a contribution from the Cooler Strand Elementary School PTA in the amount of $10,000 for the purposes of approving proposals from Triple M Recreation to replace playgrounds at Cooler Strand Elementary School in the amount of $153,977.66 and Bonnie's Park in the amount of $42,181.8.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, do we have any further, there's a, there's a pretty good explanation of all of this work in the, in our packet. Do you have a presentation on this item?
Not a presentation, but real briefly, Karen O'Donnell is on the line, and, and I believe she has some staff that worked on this very hard, so I'd like to maybe give them a second to, to give you a few comments on this item.
Terrific. Well, Ms. O'Donnell, thank you so much for joining us tonight. It's great to have you, and, and please proceed.
Sorry, that was my dog. Good evening, Mayor.
Good to have him, him with us also.
And members of council. Yeah, I wanted to introduce Brandon Altenberg. I'm not sure if you've had the opportunity to meet him yet, but he has worked for the city for a few years, but most recently in the capacity of the Grant and Special Project Administrator, and he's done a fantastic job in that role, and he worked very hard on this, this grant, so I wanted to give him the opportunity to give you a little more information.
Thanks, Karen. I'm Brandon Altenberg, Grant and Special Project Administrator with Parks Recreation. And these projects, in addition to the Great Outdoors Colorado grant and the PTA funding that's, that's been committed, there's also $69,869,895 from a Triple M Recreation grant that we got as well, that shows discounted pricing for the projects. So in total, the product values are $289,895 in total playground value for both projects, and that stems from a city contribution of $85,000. So we're basically able to leverage that $85,000 in city open space funds to get both playgrounds, so. So that stands.
All right. Well, thank you very much, and thank you for pursuing these. I would like to, before we go to questions of council, invite our public to speak on this. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on agenda item number four? You may do so now. Please speak up, and I'll recognize you. Doesn't look like we have any members of the public who wish to speak on this, so I'll open it up for questions or comments from council. Ms. Haltine?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just want to say congratulations to everybody. This was one of the first things that came up right after I was sworn in, and it just gave me a lot of hope and excitement about the things that we can do as a city when we partner with our schools. And I'm really looking forward to Color Strand getting their long, long, long overdue playground. And I also really appreciate that we're looking at this as a whole community asset, so just thank you for everyone. I think it's an extraordinary opportunity, and I'm really looking forward to the ribbon cutting.
And, Mr. Mayor, I think it's important to note too, I think this was in the council action forum, but yeah, the Color Strand Elementary Playground will be open for public use also after school hours, so it's, it will become a neighborhood park.
Terrific. Great to have that exercise equipment available. Mr. Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank everybody for the work too. As a I went to Color Strand as a kid, so this is the second, they're on their second playground that I've ever seen them have, and it's actually worse than the first one. So, so it is really nice to update this, and, and as somebody who lives on that area as somebody who lives on that area town, there's not, we don't really have any parks. We've we've got Lewis Meadow, doesn't have any equipment in it and um, we, I guess there's uh, there's one kind of far away, but Color Strand really is the the only park around, so um, it is nice. So we really appreciate it as a as a community. So thank you.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Um, okay, Miss Weaver, may I have a um a motion on this item?
I think Miss Hutchinson might have wanted to say something.
Oh, I'm sorry, Miss Hutchinson. I'm I'm sorry I missed you. Please.
That's okay. I was gonna say I had three grandkids go to that school and um the oldest one just graduated from Wheat Ridge High School, so it's been a long time. That playground really needed a little help, and I am so glad and that it's open to the public and it'll be a great improvement. I've seen the pictures. I mean, what they do with playground equipment now, and they're not doing steel. They're doing like plastics, so it won't burn the kids and things. That's looks like what's going on. I'm really in favor of it, and I think it's great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm I'm sorry I missed you uh on that round. Anyone else would like to say anything before we have a motion? Okay, Miss Weaver, now I'll I'll give you the green light for a motion, please.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I move to approve resolution thirty-four, twenty twenty, a resolution amending the twenty twenty open space budget to reflect the approval of supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to accept a grant from Great Outdoors Colorado in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand dollars and a contribution from the Cooler Strand Elementary School P T A in the amount of ten thousand dollars for the purposes of approving proposals from Triple M Recreation to replace playgrounds at Color Strand Elementary School in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a hundred and fifty-three, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-six cents and Bonnie's Park in the amount of forty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars and eight cents. I'd like to know what the eight cents is.
Second.
Okay, we have a a motion and a second by Mister Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand, and I'll ask the clerk to uh call to tally the votes.
Mister Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you so much, and thank you. Um, thank you to everyone who uh who voted for and supported this and and our staff and uh and city workers who were able to to uh move this to 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 funding, and now uh we'll move to construction and and the kids can enjoy it. So I think this is really great for our citizens. So thank you so much. Okay, we will move to agenda item number five. Uh, Mister Urban, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Resolution number thirty-two dash twenty twenty, a resolution of the Wheat Ridge City Council permitting new liquor license applicants during declared emergencies to satisfy the needs and desires requirement in multiple ways. However, revised statute title forty-four subsection three dash three oh one two A requires new liquor license applicants to establish by petitions, demonstrates, or otherwise uh that a new liquor license conforms to the needs and desires of the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood. Although there are many ways to satisfy the needs and desires requirement, it has long been the city's custom in practice to require new liquor store applicants to satisfy the needs and desires requirement by conducting a door-to-door survey of residents and businesses within one half mile of the new liquor license applicant's business. Because of coronavirus, the pandemic throughout the state new liquor license applicants have not been able to satisfy the needs and desires requirement through door-to-door needs and desire survey because folks are reluctant to speak with persons conducting the survey.
Thank you very much. Um, Mister Goff, do we have a a presentation on this item?
Uh, I think a brief one, we have um Joe Rivera, who's with our city clerk, our uh city attorney's office. He um represents our city clerk's office and the liquor board um of a liquor authority. He's on um line and of course, our city clerk who helped with this, so um I'll leave it up to those two gentlemen.
Okay, Mister Rivera, thank you for joining us tonight. Please continue.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, I, as I was mentioning, I am the uh special counsel with Murray Doll and um counsel to the liquor board, and I bring this request on behalf of the liquor board. The liquor board seeks an accommodation uh that is a result of the COVID nineteen pandemic. In essence, what's going on is that because of the pandemic, the the usual way of of obtaining proof of the uh that the liquor license is conforming to the needs and desires of the community of the neighborhood, which is the door-to-door survey, that that is not being a successful model because of the pandemic and people are reluctant to answer their their door. As a result, we are looking to take advantage of some flexibility in the statute and survive and and satisfy the needs and desires requirement and other ways, including relying on the testimony of the liquor license applicant as well as other citizens who are directly involved or or impacted by the liquor license application.
Okay, thank you. Um, before I go to questions of council, I want to open this up for questions from the public. If you are a member of the public and would like to speak on this item number five, you may do so now. If you would like to speak, please speak up and I will recognize you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item number five? Okay, I don't hear anyone, so we will close our public comment portion and move to our questions of council. Uh, counselors have a question. Miss Hoppy and Mister Urban?
Uh, I I just wanted to um bring to light that in the memo, it did say that this would be a temporary authority and that uh once the emergency declaration is lifted, it'd be forty-nine days later that the liquid Wheat Ridge Liquor Board would return to its traditional practices requiring the formal needs and desire survey. So it's not that they want to altogether remove it. It's just temporary, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Mister Urban?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. So this would apply to applicants who have previously applied but who are in process as well as new applicants during the declared emergency?
It would only apply to new applicants.
And then that that time period that uh Miss uh Hoppy presented, is that the timeframe after the declaration of emergency has ended, that that timeframe would continue?
This special accommodation is effective during the time of a declared emergency as and then an additional forty-nine days after the the emergency has been declared over.
And that that is the declaration by us as a city council or by another civil authority?
By the city as a city council.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? Okay, uh, seeing none, it looks like Mister Urban, we're ready for a motion.
I move to approve resolution thirty-two dash twenty twenty, a resolution of the Wheat Ridge City Council permitting new liquor license applicants during declared emergencies to satisfy the needs and desires requirement in multiple ways.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second by Miss Hoppy. Uh, is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council? All those in favor signify by raising your hand.
Mister Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you so much. Uh, that concludes our regular agenda items uh for tonight. So we will go to uh City Managers Matters by Mister Goff.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh, I think that meeting was way too short, so I have about thirty items I'd like to uh bring up this evening.
Good, perhaps we need a twenty-minute break.
Yeah. You're breaking up there.
Just two quick ones. Um, I I believe council remembers as part of the twenty twenty budget process, um city council approved a a halftime homeless navigator position for the city. Um, Wheat Ridge is working with um all the cities in Jefferson County and the county um on a regional homeless uh navigator program. Um, most of the cities, um, the larger cities, they they hired, they've already hired full-time uh navigators. We didn't think we needed um a full-time position in in Wheat Ridge alone, so we've been having a little bit of difficulty um finding a part-time um navigator to hire at this point. Uh, the city of Golden and the city of Edgewater have also struggled um with that. I believe there was a a question on tonight's uh Wheat Ridge Speaks um platform about the navigator position, so I just wanted to to uh make this uh comment this evening that we are moving forward. We actually have a meeting on Wednesday with um the city of Golden and the city of Edgewater, and we're gonna look at combining forces um so that we can potentially hire at least one full-time um navigator that might be able to cover all three cities um and then share the cost of that. Um, we we did, we've gone through the uh the recruitment process um months ago, and we had several people interested, um but the bigger cities picked them up and they got full-time jobs, so um, again, it was very difficult to find a part-time position. So I think um combining forces with the other cities, we should be able to find somebody. Uh, we think it's an important position, even even though we are um, we are under a hiring freeze for most positions at the city. This position is is really needed today um to uh provide services to our homeless uh population. Any questions on that? And the second item, um the uh Wheat Ridge uh Police Department Community Advisory Group is going to hold a special community uh discussion tomorrow evening um on Zoom um at six P M. Uh, Chief Murtha and myself are going to uh host that along with advisory group um to, for a couple of different purposes. Um, you know, obviously, everybody's has seen and what's going around on the country, so we're getting a lot of questions in Wheat Ridge on what's Wheat Ridge's uh policies and procedures in policing. And um some questions about our new chief. Um, Chief Murtha started in February and um, as Ally mentioned earlier, with, he started the same day as Amber, our executive assistant, and um hasn't had a a great opportunity to get out into the community because of COVID, so he's really anxious to get to know the community better, so this will be an opportunity for the community to meet our chief. Um, we will talk about the hiring and vetting process that I went through to hire um Chief Murtha, and then he'll speak about um what our current policies and procedures are on policing. And then we're gonna take questions um from the public, and again, that's tomorrow night at um six P M. On Zoom, and the Zoom information should be on the city's website. Mister Stites?
Um, that'll be on the website, I'm sure. Is that recorded and then is that gonna be up on channel eight as well?
Ally, can you, can you speak to that? I I think we can.
We are recording it. We, I don't think we were planning on putting on channel eight, but we were talking about YouTube Live, so I can follow up on that.
It's just as long as those of us that can't see it live can still see it somewhere.
Absolutely, yeah. It'll be replayed.
Good question. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I got. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
All you have. Okay, well, thank you. Well, you know, you didn't, it didn't take your full uh allotted forty-five seconds, so uh, we'll go now to our city attorney, Mister Doll.
Yeah, I I think Miss Holtein had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Miss Holtein.
Thanks. Um, I guess it's not a question as much as a comment. Um, just a reminder, if citizens have questions that they want to submit, um, they need to send those um by noon tomorrow on Tuesday. I don't have the email address in front of me, but if you go to the city's website and find the event, email address is there, but if there are questions that our citizens want to submit, uh, those questions do need to be received by noon on Tuesday for um the panel to take a look at and respond to. Thank you.
Okay, we will also. Thank you, uh, Miss Holtein. We'll also be taking questions that evening if um somebody doesn't get them in. Um, but we just wanted to provide an opportunity to uh those folks who maybe couldn't get on the call to uh provide questions ahead of time.
Good to know. Thanks.
Okay, thanks so much. All right, Mister Doll?
I don't have a formal report of any sort, but I'm happy to respond to any questions, council, might have.
I don't see any hands, so we'll thank you for your service and uh move um to uh Mister Kirkpatrick.
Uh, in response to the question was asked earlier, uh, I have all of those protests that were filed about the Clear Creek Crossing. They all say the same thing. They took the form, we provide them online, filled it out, and signed it. Uh, if you look carefully at the forms, what you see is that the people who have signed those protests all live beyond the city's limits, but just literally next to the city of Wheat Ridge in unincorporated Jefferson County or unincorporated parts of Golden, if you will. Uh, there may not be any Wheat Ridge residents who live within a hundred feet of the proposed development. But as Mister Doll explained, you don't have to be a resident to file a protest. I'm happy to provide any member of council who wants it or to send all of you copies of the forms. Um, I just wanted to let you know that um they are repetitious. I also would like to encourage all of you and anyone else who may happen to encounter passing by a city police officer to thank him or her for the work they're doing and the reputation they have built here. They are under an awful lot of pressure from an awful lot of directions. And I, for one, think we have to be very grateful to the kind of service and protection we get from them and the difficult time they're going through now. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Mister Kirkpatrick. Uh, it looks like we have our city treasurer, Mister Miller, uh, on the line. Mister Miller, do you have anything for us tonight?
Um, I don't have anything specific tonight. I'm looking forward to an opportunity to brief the council on some um updates regarding our uh seed investments with respect to some of the economic tur- turmoil that we've been having in the recent financial markets because of uh COVID nineteen. So I'm looking forward to be on a future agenda.
Thank you very much. Um, Miss Nosler Beck?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I've been having some technical difficulties with my email, and so um for some of the constituents who have reached out to me via email, um, I apologize for my delay in getting back to you. Um, but I should have responded today, and um hopefully we're fixing this. Ally and and John have been really helpful. Um, we're gonna figure it out. We're gonna get through this, but um I appreciate the grace um that everybody's um given me in that. So um, and also, uh, just wanted to um just thank everybody for continuing to wear their masks and keeping each other safe. Um, is that on the green belt quite a bit over the past um weeks, and people are wearing their masks um when they're coming in close proximity to one another, and um so it's just, it's just a great sign of the kind of community that we have here, so thank you.
Thank you. Um, Miss Dozeman?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, I was going to ask for council council support and me applying for the Colorado Municipal League Board opening for uh medium-sized cities between eight thousand and sixty thousand people. The application process closes uh Wednesday, and it requires uh a formal support for the nomination by either the mayor, mayor pro tem, or our city manager, so I can send out that formal letter for a signature from one of you if I gain support from the rest of council.
I would be more than happy to support you in that request.
Thank you, Mister Mayor.
And I I guess I would just add that I I think that if we could maybe give Leah some support and ask for consensus to see if um we could all give her the consensus as as council, so in the um in the letter of recommendation that will be required to be written that the uh mayor can state that the council as a body supports Leah in um in this uh application, so I'd like to ask for a consensus if we could uh support Leah to apply for the um C M L Executive Board.
And I would second that support that also.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Mister Stites?
Um, nothing today, and thank you for all the work on the Color Strand project.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you very much. Miss Weaver?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
How are the, how are the goats?
The goats are doing well. Thank you.
Okay.
Two new babies. Everybody's great. So thanks again for everyone's patience last week.
Send the, send them our best regards. Or what or whatever is appropriate uh in in the barnyard.
I hug them. I'll send them hugs.
Okay, Miss Holtein?
Can I ask, uh, Mister Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I had a couple neighbors ask the other day, when are the goats coming back to Lewis Meadows?
That's a great question. So uh, it is a a easy program to continue to be socially distanced, so they will be back yeah, later this summer. They are going to be starting out probably this first week in the right-of-way between uh the farm and Prospect Valley, which was the original uh city space that they started grazing. So look for that. Uh, go visit them on your walks uh down Quail, and then uh probably I I would say it's usually about the beginning of July, mid-July, that we'll be moving them over there, so um, we'll, we'll figure out some way to to do something fun in a socially distanced way with goats in between us or something. Thanks for asking.
Lot of District Three residents, very tiny ones, excited to see your goats.
Okay, thank you for that report. Uh, Miss Holtein? Okay, thank you for that report. Uh, Ms. Hulteen?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so a couple of things. Uh, first of all, um, I just want to just share that my thoughts and a lot of my, um, civic energy have been really focused towards sort of this moment in time. And I feel like it's hard to be a civic leader and not be aware that, um, across our country and really across the globe, that this is a time when we are really, um, questioning ourselves and, and a lot of the civic systems that we're all part of and, and looking to see, you know, what aren't we seeing and who aren't we hearing from? And, um, and I don't have the answers to that, but I do know that this is the time where really we need to be listening to our, our citizens and, and seeking out different perspectives and viewpoints and not just assuming we're, we're running business as usual. So to that end, um, Councilwoman Dozeman and I are planning to do a community listening session a week from tomorrow. So that is June sixteenth. Um, we are still working out a couple of the details, but we expect that the details, um, will be posted on the city's website tomorrow, Wednesday at the latest. We're working with city staff to iron out some of the details. But, uh, Councilwoman Dozeman and I have just been talking about the importance of just listening and hearing the stories from our community right now and recognizing that sometimes coming forward at council isn't the right format for that. So, um, we really want everyone to know that we are looking to hear from you. Um, what are, what are your thoughts and experiences, um, that we need to be hearing? So, um, uh, Councilwoman Dozeman and I are looking forward to that. And again, more details will be forthcoming, um, Wednesday at the latest. They'll be on the website. And, uh, beyond that, I just wanna, um, reemphasize how amazing our community is. I see a lot of respect for social distancing and mask wearing and it has made the onset of summer, um, much more welcoming. And I have enjoyed being out in the parks again and just want to thank our community for that role in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hulteen. Um, Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to echo the clerk's, uh, comments regarding our Wheat Ridge Police Department and encourage everyone to, uh, take a moment to thank them for their service and their protection and their, uh, ability to provide, uh, peace and wellbeing to our citizens through their service. So, uh, thank you for their efforts. As an update to the, uh, Business Stabilization Program, uh, we did hear from a hundred and eleven business owners within the city of Wheat Ridge who were seeking assistance through the program. Uh, that deadline was last Friday at noon. So, uh, come this Thursday, the task force will be meeting to go through those applications and determine how we allocate the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars we have across those a hundred and eleven applicants. And, uh, I should have an update for you, uh, at the next meeting.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo, um, Mr. Kirkpatrick's comments regarding the police. I support the police and I feel that we do need to have police. And, um, also, I want to state that it has been so hot and dry and now windy that we are in a high fire time and just be careful about throwing things out a window or any, anything that could cause a fire with this kind of a wind. We just have to be alert. So I would just like to say that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Hoppy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, um, I first just want to say thank you very much to Leah for, um, stepping up to, um, represent our community on the CML Board. And I hope that you get elected into that position. Um, also, I would like to see if a council member will, um, join me in adding the, the discussion from our city treasurer, Mr. Miller, to discuss investment in the light of the current economic en- environment of our city investments. So if somebody would like to support, thank you, Corey. And then, um, I have one que- oh, and then I also wanted to say, in We Rich Speaks, somebody had asked about the neighborhood re-, uh, the neighborhood, the NRS, um, staff position. And I just wanted to let everybody know that next week, June fifteenth, on study session, we will be going over the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Communication Engagement Plan. We will get to, um, meet that, um, staff member that has been hired to, uh, carry out our, our NRS goals. So I wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. And then I just wanted to ask, uh, Mr. Goff, there was a, um, statement on We Rich Speaks about there's a temporary wall up near Clear Creek Crossing. And, um, they were asking if a permanent wall was going to be put there. And, um, and so I'm just wondering if that's something that we could look at, maybe speaking to Clear Creek Crossing about? It appears as though it's a neighborhood safety for, um, you. And if they haven't already looked at it, if we can ask them to take a look at that.
Yeah, definitely. I'm not aware of what wall they're talking about, but we'll look into it and get back to that, uh, that resident.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms., um, Ms. Hoppy. I think that was, uh, I lost my paper here. That was, uh, I guess we are closing in on the end of the, end of the evening. I want to, uh, thank you all for joining us. Uh, Kate Cook with Local Works, thank you for telling us about all the great things that Local Works has coming up in our, uh, in our world later on this year. It seems like we haven't seen anybody forever, but, uh, we'll, we'll have an opportunity to get together and some good events. Uh, thank you, Ms. O'Donnell and Mr. Aldenberg for working with the Color Strand Elementary to put in a new playground for our citizens to enjoy. Uh, the, the, uh, some of our most important citizens will be doing work on that, uh, on that playground, believe me. Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Rivera with Marie Dahl for, uh, for helping us out with the liquor, the liquor hearing. I want to call everybody's attention to the police, uh, Community Advisory Committee meeting tomorrow. Uh, you can go to our website at, uh, at the city's website and click on the calendar for tomorrow night, June ninth at six PM and hit join the virtual meeting. I think this is a huge topic in our world and I think we need to all, uh, be, be serious about how we address it and, and look inward and look outward and see how we can, how we can communicate with one another. Um, I'm, uh, I'm saddened to leave you tonight with the, uh, with a notice that a, that a Wheat Ridge, uh, a longtime Wheat Ridge and a, and a, uh, stellar leader in our community, Don Cypher, has passed away. Uh, Don started Cypher Automotive many, many years ago. Uh, Don's been active in, uh, in a lot of groups and was always a, a terrific volunteer in our community. If you ever needed to do anything, he stepped forward when we, when he talked about, uh, unit number one, Police Car a couple of years ago, he said, hey, I'll, uh, I'll step up and help, help restore that, uh, that, that project. He was a, a leader in the Wheat Ridge Business Association and a stellar member of our community, putting together, uh, you know, car shows and, and, uh, events along, uh, along our thoroughfares. Great community, great volunteer, all-around good guy. So, uh, Don Cypher will be, will be missed in our community. Um, they're gonna have a, um, a gathering, uh, at Cypher Automotive on, uh, on Harland Street, just, uh, north of forty-fourth, uh, Wednesday morning. They're going to motorcade over to Abandamere Speedway and, uh, and pay your respects to Don. So, uh, if you're able to send best wishes to the family or go to the event. So, uh, always tough to lose a, to lose a long-time, uh, good member of our community. But we have a strong community and, um, and a lot of challenges, but we will, uh, we will survive and be stronger. So if there's, uh, no more, uh, business to come before the council, I thank you all and we will stand adjourned.